Okay, good evening and welcome to the March 15th Plating Board meeting. Nancy, please take attendance.
Yes. Commissioner Narenberg?
Present.
Commissioner Barra?
He's out.
Okay. Commissioner Wolfson?
Present.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Present.
Commissioner Michael? And Chairman Leo?
Present. This evening, we have the approval of the meeting minutes for February 16th. We also have 200 White Plains Road, which is a return, and 9 Jackson Avenue. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 16th. Can I have a second?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So at this point, 200 White Plains Road?
Good evening. Hope everyone is doing well. I'm Chris Tremetola from Peter Tizofia Associates, representing Iona at the former Concordia Campus Athletic Field Project. We were here in front of the board at the last working session and the last public meeting was two months ago. Since then, we have had confirmation from the Tuckahoe third-party engineer that the engineering for the stormwater actually exceeds the regulations required, as Chuck can go into in a little bit more detail. But also, we, as we had discussed previously, we had developed a logistics and staging plan that seeks to disrupt the surrounding traffic and public as little as possible during the construction period, which will be, you know, a few months at most. But this is to develop and kind of put forward a plan that shows the effort that Iona is putting forth to make sure that they're being good neighbors in this first instance here in Tuckahoe. We reviewed last working session and the previous meeting before that to answer any questions. We're obviously still available to answer any questions you may have about the project. We have all the plans, renderings, and details. If any of those need to be reviewed, I can put them up on screen. But I was gonna start with more of a discussion here if anybody had any questions.
I just want to make sure, just for the record, not only did our Tuckahoe consultant review your document, but also it was voted to Eastchester, who then provided comments to you guys. And then I know Chuck has incorporated the comments from Eastchester and Tuckahoe's consultants into his design.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So Chuck, would you kind of elaborate on what were the, just for the public, what were the incorporations of the Village of Tuckahoe and the town of Eastchester's comments into your application?
Well, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, your consultant basically acknowledged that our design met both the villages and the DEC stormwater regulations. We did get some technical comments. And they dealt with how we analyze some of the storm events and the soil conditions. There were questions about whether or not if your technical investigation had been done, did we perceive groundwater and rock to be an issue? There were four or five very technical comments about how we treat the rate of runoff from a site and its existing conditions. We were able to address, I would say, all of those comments. Although we felt our design was appropriate before those changes, those changes had a slightly positive effect. When I say positive, I mean that there was a slight reduction in the rate of runoff, which is a better condition for any downstream system. Just so that the board has a good sense, you know, we designed for 100-year storms as the maximum, but there's a lot of discussion about how frequent 100-year storm happens with larger storm events. So the board should understand that our design really controls a much higher storm than 100-year storm event. We have our post-development and it's conditioned that we're proposing to leave it. The rate of discharge from our site will be about half of what it is currently in a 100-year storm, which means we have the capacity to handle a much higher storm event. So really, the point of that is that we have a very conservative design. And there's clearly no, there will be no impact from the redevelopment of this field on the downstream drainage system.
And that's the sense I got from the response from the consultants as well. Anyone like to add anything else from the applicant side?
I just, I wanted to say something that we've had had three 100-year storms in the past month, like in the past, like, and this is what you guys are, that's the number you're using, and that's kind of like your max, 100-year storm. And is that the best that you're able to do in terms of holding the water? Is that like your?
So there's a little bit of a misperception about what a 100-year storm event is. And I think there's a perception that, you know, it only should happen once in 100 years, and that's not really, that's not really the case.
Right.
I will tell you that, even though people like to say that there were 300-year storm events in the last two years, a 100-year storm event in this area is more than nine inches of rainfall, and we really only had one of those that reached that level. Now, what I tried to describe to you was an over-design so that we are actually handling a storm event larger than a 100-year storm event. So if I were to have designed this by, only by the minimum 100-year storm and control that storm event, I could let almost twice as much water out of our system as we are letting out. So we've actually designed this for greater than 100-year storm. Great. That's a plus.
Any other questions? Anybody on the board? Okay. Since I see no other questions, I make a motion to open the public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Some move.
All in favor? Aye?
Some move.
All in favor? Aye?
Some move.
Can you hear me?
Aye.
All right. Is anyone here from the community that wish to speak on this application?
Yes, hi. I would like to speak. My name is Richard Gardella. And my parents are the property owners at 16 Winslow Circle, which is adjacent to the eastern side, the northeastern side of the soccer field. At the end of the meeting, I was hoping that you wouldn't mind putting up the plans again. I hadn't had an opportunity to see them, but you know, we've had flooding in this area, as I'm sure a lot of other community members have mentioned, into our basements from stormwater. It appears that the problem has gotten a lot better after, you know, fairly recent improvements to the flow. Obviously, as property owners, we're concerned that if the runoff from the soccer field is going to be greater, we're very curious to see how that will impact the water table near our property at that corner of the field. I don't know if you can address that, or if you can, when you show the plans, go into a little bit of detail, but that would be helpful. And the other thing, I just wanted to say a quick hello to Gary Gertsen, with whom I used to work at the town of Eastchester in the mid-1980s. Hey, Gary.
Hello, Rich. I was just gonna chat with you. I haven't seen you since then, since working.
It's nice to see you.
Good to see you.
So, Chris?
Thank you all.
Chris, Chuck, can you put up the plans?
Yeah, might I suggest too that Chuck maybe walk Rich through it first verbally before we get into the minutia of the plans? Because I think Rich's question is susceptible to a very clear narrative answer that he didn't have the the pleasure of receiving at the previous meetings when it came up.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Chuck, you're muted.
So I think the answer to your question is probably best described as a comparison of two conditions. Currently, the field has no defined controlled stormwater management system. There are some pipes we found, but in essence, you have a large area that just completely sheet flows off the site. What we're proposing to do as part of our design, and again, it's been validated by multiple consultants reviewing it for the municipalities, is in essence store that water on the site and slowly discharge it in a manner as to ensure that the downstream system can handle what we're discharging. And what I just previously described is that we are actually I'm gonna say over-detaining the water, so we're slowing it down even more than what's required to make it a conservative design. So I think that's the simplest way. We're creating in essence a bathtub on our site that has a small opening and a little pipe that lets the water out slowly. Now, when it rains, the water just completely runs off the site. So we believe that in essence, we are actually making an improvement to the current condition. And it'll be a system that will have a significant longevity to it. It's not it's not a system that will deteriorate over time. It's a gravel system. It's new piping. So this will be a significant improvement from what you have. And I would guess that any runoff from this site that is currently adversely affecting adjacent properties, that will no longer happen.
So I'm sorry, I just have one question, since you used the bathtub metaphor about the field. What, just thinking about a bathtub, what happens when a bathtub overflows, like when the water caps to the top? I mean, it's gonna overflow in every direction. And that's, I guess that's what the people in Winslow are talking about, because that side of the street doesn't generally get any water at the moment. And so
Doesn't get any water now? It won't get any water when we're done.
Where does the pipe, where does the pipe come out? What part of the field?
It comes out to the Rose Avenue side?
The Rose Avenue side? Is that, is that in the middle of the field, or is that towards the north or the south of the Rose Avenue?
Rose Avenue, right. It's on the south line. South.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
I had a question. Ed Conway, Winslow. In the analysis?
I think Ms. Staunton had her hand up first, if you don't mind.
Sure, no problem.
Thanks. Hi, Ed. Colleen Staunton for Winslow Circle. My house also backs up to the field. I have a few, I think there's some other questions that'll come around drainage, but I'm curious, the new architects, if they have walked in between the property line of Concordia and our side of Winslow? And so they've seen the current dip, everything back there. Would be my first question, and a follow-up to that would be, just describe where that fence is going to be. There are trees that are inches away from my back property line, so I'm curious as to where that fence is going to be placed. It's currently, in my words, a jungle back there. So I'm wondering what the plans are to manage that with regards to where the placement of the fences.
I'll address the location where the fence, I can talk to the drainage. Yes, we've done a thorough inspection of the entire perimeter of this site. Design is such that it adjacent property.
I'm sorry, there was phone ringing. I couldn't hear what you just said.
What I said was, we have inspected the site, the entire perimeter of the site. In fact, most of the land that you're talking about drains away from your property onto the college property. However, that being said, so most of the water from your sites drain onto the college property. We control that water now, and we discharge it to Rose Avenue.
I'm not actually referring to the drainage. I know that discussion will happen, so I'm just curious as to placement of fence, how that land is going to be managed between my property line and Concordia's property line? Again, there's very big trees. I have three of them. Concordia has, in the past, actually had to cut one down because it fell onto our fence. So I'm just actually curious on where the fence is going to be placed, the space between my fence and that fence, and how that land is going to be managed, given where the placement of the trees currently are.
I could go into the fencing issue there. A lot of those trees that were planted, I can't speak to each specific one individually without being on the site or blowing up the plan. But a lot of those trees look to be original screening landscape evergreens that were planted there 50 or 60 years ago when that site first became a field. Those trees do not do any screening now, as they're all 50, 60 feet tall, and they don't have any branches below 20 feet. So all of those plants were planted in the Concordia property, very close to the property line. On the survey, it shows as though, as the property line runs right behind those trees for many of them. Obviously, there's a couple deciduous trees in there that may have just been wild trees that we will be working around with that. If that fence needs to jog one way or the other for that tree, we're gonna get the fence as close to the property line as possible as we show on the plan. If there's a tree impeding that direction of the fence, we will jog to the Concordia, to the Iona side to avoid that tree, if it's a healthy tree and doesn't need to come down. As the plan shows, we have a very substantial planting plan as well that addresses a few canopy trees in that landscape, but mostly understory trees and large shrubs that will actually do that screening permanently. These are not plants that'll grow up to be 60, 70 feet tall. These will be plants that max out at 12, 16, 20 feet tall, where the foliage all stays low. I'm not sure if that answers the question.
I mean, partially, I guess I'm curious. Again, they're very wide trees, so again, is the fence gonna go on the other side closer to Concordia, closer to my field? So, and also, you said the plan is plant other trees in addition to the ones that are back there. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. If I could share my screen, I could go over a lot of those trees there. Is that, is that all right?
It's all good, Chris. It's okay.
I mean, I will selfishly say, I think a recommendation, we'd love to have a, we'd still love to have the chain link fence back there. Again, I'm still curious how access to that would be kind of a zigzag fence if I'm just anticipating it. And if there is a big gap, my request would be if there's a big gap between the the fence and the property lines, that there's access back there, so that that can be managed by the college as well.
Okay.
That seems fine to me, Chris.
Okay. I agree.
We will take care of those trees, man.
Great, thank you.
This plan here is the survey, which shows the exact size, the size and location of those trees. And as you can see, the existing fence runs pretty much on the property line, except for this one bump here for these two properties. But as you can see, all the trees rest a few feet in from the property line and from the existing fence. The idea is that the proposed fence would be right up against or replace, we should go it to, to go right up against the existing fence. Yes. In areas where the fence is broken, we would be replacing it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I'm curious how you'd put the fence into the ground, given the roots, like, actually go under our current fence? But, I mean, I'll leave that to the planning and how you guys anticipate on handling that.
The footings for the fence will only be every six feet, and they'll be able to get those in regardless of the root systems there. They'll place those posts strategically.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you. It sent a number of questions earlier today to the board, but just going back to the 100-year storm, just looking at the details, you know, since they were posted on Friday, it looks like there's a nine-inch storm roughly. And if you could explain, like, some of the terminology, a seven-inch runoff, how much rain is actually absorbed or held onto the field, and how much is actually running off onto the side, because it mentioned a seven-inch runoff?
We don't, we don't measure it that way. So I don't know that I can answer your question. I'm not sure how to answer it. So the storm event, the largest storm event that we analyze is a 100-year storm event, which I believe is around nine inches. We take into consideration the improved soil condition with an infiltration rate, small in this case. We account for the storage capacity of the gravel underneath the field. And then, based on a hydraulic model, we slowly meter that water out. And if you're looking at the report, the comparison that you really want to focus on that will be meaningful to you is comparing the discharge rates of the two storm events. And you'll see, in the proposed condition, developed condition, our discharge rates are substantially less than in the existing condition, which says that we are throttling back the discharge to a degree greater than what currently discharges from the site.
No, I understand the discharge, but when the precipitation comes down onto the field, and let's say it's IDA, you know, just the end of last year, in a heavy downpour, how much can be absorbed? Will it all be absorbed within a three-hour period of time? I saw that, like, six inches could be absorbed within, whether it's six hours, something like that, or then there would be runoff, because this field now will be crowned, and then they'll be going off to each side. So will all of that water be taken into the storage containers and none running off the sides, because that's what we're concerned about on Winslow Circle, running off the sides, because we're below the field. So all of that rain, if it hits, it will come down the hills and onto our properties and potentially soaking the earth into basements.
Chuck, you're muted. I could answer that, though. The carpet of the field is a mesh. Any drop, even though that field is crowned, any drop of water that lands on that field immediately sinks into the gravel below. The gravel blow is that bathtub that will fill up with that water. So there will be zero runoff, sheet runoff, surface runoff from that field. Everything would be stored below the field and then be trickled out into the system, not out to surface. We don't daylight any of that stormwater detention. That goes then into the, is piped to the system under Rose Avenue. So there is no chance from, with this design, that any sheet flow of water would go from the field onto any other property.
So this could handle an IDA storm absorbing all of that water? No issue, because my concern was that in the Bronxville Field, Athletic Field, that flooded and all of the particles that were on the field washed away, and it wasn't able to absorb all of that. So is this design better, and it can absorb nine inches of water coming down in a number of hours, and we don't have to worry about any water flowing off the field coming onto our properties? That's what you're saying?
The, correct. But just to, just to point out that the Bronxville Field is, was not inundated by rainwater that fell onto its property. It was inundated by floodwater that came from other properties. The Bronxville Field is in a low point, which is why it's located on Pondfield Road, aptly named.
Yes.
And almost all of Bronxville drains to that area, which is a flood zone. So when that field flooded, it actually didn't flood from the rainwater that fell on its property itself. That water was in the system there. That field flooded from all the surrounding properties and roads that drained onto it. So in this case, with our field, you know, we're not in that swale situation with this field where, you know, there's tremendous amounts of water from other places going onto this property. So it's a very different situation to analyze.
All right. So, I mean, that's comforting. If nine inches of rain come down, the field will be able to absorb that. And nothing comes off of that field and spills over into the properties of Winslow Circle.
Correct.
And just going back to the plantings, you know, it looks great planting all those trees. Will any trees be cut down? I mean, some of them are dead, but again, the root system's holding up that bank, because there's a slope there. There'd be some concern with that.
The trees overall will be assessed by an arborist while we're doing the project. There are a number of trees that are in decline that will be coming down for safety reasons. We always like to preserve any trees that are in good health. So the, in terms of the root systems holding the soil, there's not going to be that much removal of trees, that that would be a concern. And given the amount of new planting that we're doing, it'll actually be quite a stable soil going forward. And actually, the heavier the planting on any parcel of property increases its absorption of stormwater to begin with.
No, that's great, because it's very moist back there, because it gets all of that water.
Right. It's a swell back there.
Yes. And I was wondering, you know, they said that a lot of soil analysis was done on the property, but it seemed like most of that was done on the field. Has any been done along those edges of the property where it is very moist and retains quite a bit of water there?
No, we had no borings in the back swale, because there was no work being done there. Really, the only information we would have gleaned from that being different from on the field is there's probably a thicker layer of topsoil in that area because of that swell.
Yeah, I guess as a concern, my concern would be that if water does come off the field, that it just adds to the water and that groundwater level for the houses that are below the field level. And that would cause more basement flooding. We're lucky we haven't had that. But there is a very high water table at that point, so that's comforting. There is, there was once something I did see that there was like a two-by-two-foot drain on the northwest side, and it looks like it has a pipe running along the sides of the Winslow properties. Do you remember what, I had a question, whether, has any analysis on that been done? Does that just leach out into the sides of the properties there? And how deep is that?
Chuck, do you want to go into that?
Yeah, we, there's a swell on that side of the property that we incorporated into the stormwater design, and that water is introduced into our storage system and then discharged on the other side out Rose Avenue. Yes, we accounted for that. We accounted for all of the drainage on the property.
Yeah, but there, I think maybe it was an earlier sketching I saw, but there was a two-by-two drain on the northwest side of White Plains Road, and then there's a pipe running along the Winslow side, not the Rose Avenue side, and it didn't seem to terminate anywhere?
So that design has been modified in the updated plan. If you saw the line, you noticed that that pipe no longer exists, and we've connected that drain to the field condition. So that condition that you're describing, that isn't part of the design anymore.
Okay, great. And then, just one last question. It doesn't look like the footprint of the field has changed or any of the grading at all. Is that correct?
The field? Go ahead, Chuck.
I'm just wondering what the comparison is, though.
What exists today? Like, they're not going to expand, like, make the field, you know, larger towards the Winslow side of the property? It's gonna stay where it is, right? They're not gonna need more dirt or change the grading at all on that bank of the hill?
No, actually, we're gonna be taking No, actually, we're, we're going to be taking out a, quite a large amount of dirt to bring in the gravel for the field below. The field elevation itself, right now, the, the crown of the field is a little bit more drastic than what we would expect for a synthetic turf field. So we are taking a delta between the high and low points of that field. And field elevation will be within, it will be, it'll be closer to the top of the crown of the field than the, than the bottom.
Okay, so no real change?
No real change, correct.
I think he was, he's also asking about the, the physical size, like the outline, like the boundaries of the field itself. Has that changed from its current footprint?
No, it's, it's hard to say what the exact field size is right now because it's a little bit of an amorphous shape. We are creating a, a regulation field, which is what is there right now. In order to do that, they have one corner that is a compromised corner kick, which is the northeast corner of the, of the property, which is why we show two small retaining walls there. The very short retaining walls that, that encapsulate that corner of the field.
Just for the record, what's your address?
Eight Winslow.
All right, thank you. Laura's iPhone? You're next.
Okay. Hi, everybody. You hear me okay?
Yes, I expected a Laura and I got a Larry.
Laura is right there. She said, Steve, you talk. All right.
Identify yourself and your address.
Steve Hollitz, and we are at 14 Winslow Circle. We're right next to the Gardellos and they are from Ed's house. Anyways, so I just, I guess quite to clarify two points. I, I've been listening to most of it. I kind of missed some parts, so I might, my question might be answered already. System, so it's going out to Rose. I know in prior plans, because this has been an ongoing discussion for years back from Concordia, started this conversation. Is that drainage going into the sewer system or is it just draining to the street?
It's connected to the existing storm drainage system in Rock. As was, as was the prior design. So their, our design from the discharge perspective, the pipe matched the Concordia design.
Okay, so there won't be extra flooding on Rose?
Oh, no, no.
That's a relief step.
The contained system.
Okay, great. And then I guess the second question is kind of, so we are the second last house. We are below the field. We have experienced flooding, two major basement floods in the last five years in our home. And there's a natural little waterway. I guess you guys, is that what you're referring to as a swain? Those are a little natural water flow behind our property. So earlier I saw, I think Chris had shown us a picture of the topography and the fence. But I'm a little confused because he says we're going to replace the existing fence with a new fence. But the existing fence is about 15 feet above us. You know, on the field level, we're down the hill. So is the fence coming in our property line? I believe you guys own that little slope. So are you bringing the fence down to our property lines or is it staying where it is? I'm, that, that I'm a little confused by.
Sorry.
If they're going to go to the property lines, which would mean it would be at the bottom of the hill, not at the top where it is now.
The, the new wood fencing will be at the bottom of the hill. And they'll be field fencing at the curb of the field. Again, I could load up the, I will share my screen quickly.
So the stream will be inside the fence?
Correct. So if we look here, we see the existing fence, if you can see where my mouse is traveling.
Yep.
And the new fence which sits, this is a, a graphics issue of that we're showing it offset so much. So it could be two distinct lines there, but it would be very close to that existing fence. And as you can see, as we go down, we are down the hill here along the existing property fence that's there. You can see it's offset considerably from the existing property line. But we will follow that along the existing fence just offset. So the, your individual fences for each property will remain. And we will put a new fence, that new decorative wood fence, just inside of that on the Iona Field side. And then that will connect to the side here and run along to the Rose Avenue side.
Okay. And so you had just, I forget who it was now, who had mentioned about retaining walls. So the northeast field is actually right around where my property is on that second glass house from the top of the right there. So those are here. I guess in. And.
Second from last, that's the one, that's your home.
Right. So the Gardella is the last house and then we're the house right next to them. So, so from where the field is down, is that going to be just vegetation? I mean, it's a slope. I mean, you're not going to be.
Yes, it's, it's, it's a steep slope there. We have, as you can see, this, the, the short retaining walls here and here. And this is quite a steep slope, which will be vegetated. As you can see, there's a number of, of shrubs, a couple of small trees here. And there is existing vegetation that we'll be preserving if healthy. But it will be quite a vegetated slope here to, to shield the, the view. But you'll also have that decorative fence as well and your existing fence.
Well, there, so two, two last questions. I think I'm done. On the top of the field, on the field level, will soccer balls would roll down that, that?
No, this, this will have a short fence over here as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And then last one. So with regard to that swain and that little natural river or, or stream, are you doing anything to that besides putting the fence up there and vegetation? Or, or, because again, that's a natural stream, so there's going to be water flow there.
Well, just keep in mind, right now, as you can see, if you trace this contour here, you can see it loops around to itself. If you, if you're following that cursor, that, if we bisected it, that's the crown of the original field. Which means half of that field is draining to the north right now. Sheet, sheet flow to the north, which is feeding that swell. Right? That's, that's creating that stream. Now, the only area that's actually feeding this swell is, we have a drain here, right? Which is capturing all the runoff from up here on the hill. So the only area will be right here that would actually be landing in this area. With the additional planting, we have cut the amount of runoff on this area by probably 90%.
Okay. But as long, as long as somebody there still has it on the radar that that, that is a natural waterway.
Yes, yeah. Yes, we, in our design, we were very cognizant of nothing is go, we're, we're not going to build a retaining wall all the way along the property line so we could get positive flow to the south. But we, you know, because that, that wouldn't be in anyone's best interest. But we did a, a drastic reduction to make this a, a far better situation for all parties.
Okay.
We left it so that your backyards, which many of those backyards were thoroughly drained to that, could still do so.
Okay. Yeah, we do, we do drain to that. We have a drain systems that goes out to that, to that area as well. And then the bottom of the hill, the very far right, you know, is, is always the low point. And that, that's prone to flooding as well. So as long as you believe the system is going to reduce that, then that will help. Because there's a little park at there, so up to the whole community, just in front of which gets flooded all the time whenever it rains. Right. Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you very much for your answers. I appreciate it.
Uh, Carolina, who's next?
All right, next we have Laura and I think that's it. No, one more.
Ms. Carney?
Ms. Carney and Mr. Carney. There we go.
Yes.
Identify yourself and where you live.
Yeah, Bill Carney, 101 Middleton Place. I'm at the corner of Middleton and Crawford Street, right across from the softball field. The first thing I want to mention is that the, just so you guys know, the meeting ID and the password that you have listed on channel 75 for anybody listening isn't, is incorrect. So I would imagine there are some people who are trying to get into this meeting that can't because it's listed incorrectly on channel 75. I only was able to get in because I was able to text somebody who's connected to somebody on the board and they directed me to the correct numbers. So I don't know if you want to change that or if you want to, you know, announce what the actual password and Zoom link number is. Because I would imagine there are a number of people who are probably frustrated not being able to get in because they have the incorrect information. So you may want to mention that after I, after.
Why don't we just do that now?
I think Carolina has that. Carolina, can you do that for us?
I'm sorry. Say it again, Gary?
Can you name the password and the, the Zoom link?
It's, it's in the chat. I can repeat that, not a problem. We have our meeting ID 88159697571. Again, 88159697571. And our password is 726729. I'm going to put it in the chat box once again, so everyone can write it down.
Yeah, well, the chat doesn't really help because if you can't get into, you can't see the chat. So I would imagine if you can change channel 75, that may help some people, but hopefully people are listening.
I'm not, I'm not sure who does that.
Okay, well, just note that it's incorrect.
It is at the village website if they go there.
Okay. So as I mentioned, I live at 101 Middleton Place. I've been here for 17 years. I've seen kind of every rainstorm we've had over the last 17 years. There, just as a little background, there was a, a house across from me that was probably one of the original houses built in the 50s. It was bought by a developer, it was knocked down, didn't have any kind of drainage, obviously. They were building a new house. I went to Eastchester Town prior to them approving it and just said, you know, what's the, the stormwater plan for, you know, this area? Because obviously we do get a lot of water being at the bottom of the hill here. And, you know, they kind of said the same thing. We planned for 100 year storm, we put in 27 dry wells, blah, blah, blah. That house, you know, through, within a couple of months of being done, three rainstorms and their basement flooded, you know, six, close to six feet in the basement. And it only exacerbated the problem at the bottom of Middleton and Crawford. So I'm a little skeptical when I hear, you know, we planned for 100 year storm. It just doesn't seem like it really seems to work out anytime anybody plans for 100 year storm. It was, the situation was actually better when there wasn't any drainage there and we just had natural drainage. My question is, and I don't know if you can put it up on the, up on the screen, what the drainage plan is. So currently that field has no sub drainage, correct? So it's not collecting any of the stormwater and then directing it directly into the sewers on Rose and Crawford, correct?
Correct. There's no drainage on the field right now.
Okay, so there's no drainage. And I don't know if you can put your, share your screen with what the, the drainage proposal is. So this.
Chris, can you put her up? Chuck, can you throw?
Chuck, do you have the, the modified one? I have the last one that's, I can put up the, the, the previous version.
For all, it's appropriate, it's the same.
Yep. Apologies.
Okay, that's it. So this drainage system is going to contain all of the water. It's going to be a self-contained system from what I understand. And then it would only be released into the sewers at a certain point? Or it will, regardless of the rainfall, it will always be feeding somewhat into the sewers?
No, it's designed to collect stormwater runoff and discharge it during a storm event. It's not, it will discharge. And for your smaller events, because there is some ground infiltration, your, your, your smaller events, you know, half inch or less, you probably won't get any discharge from the system. It'll be absorbed into the ground. But no, it's designed to, during a rainfall event, hold the water and slowly meter it out over a period of time.
Okay, so regardless of, it's, it's constantly going to be open. It's not going to be a self-contained system that the, the runoff is some kind of emergency if the self-contained system starts to overflow, correct?
No stormwater management systems are designed that way. They all are designed in order to meet the regulations to meter outflows, outflow.
Okay. And my first question is, I, I know for homeowners, because I did an extension on my house, we had to maintain all of our own stormwater. So we had to put dry wells in and were not allowed to have runoff into the sewer system. We couldn't add anything into the sewer system. Our drains all have to be into dry wells and then, you know, not into the sewer system. Do, is, are, you know, this kind of field, a public field, are they, do they not have to abide by that as well? Are they exempt from being able to feed into the sewer system?
Actually, we're, we're held to a higher standard, to be honest with you. And there's a little bit of a, it depends on exactly where you're at and what regulations apply to a single family house. That's what it comes down to. A system like this is governed by two sets of regulations. Regulations that do not even apply to single family houses. We have a much stricter set of regulations that we go by that are established by the York State DEC and your own drainage, village drainage requirements.
Okay.
A meter discharge.
And what do you mean by meter discharge? So over the course of how long?
It depends on the storm event. It can be, I think this one will handle 100 year storm in about. And don't hold me to this, I don't have the report in front of me. Somewhere just less than 24 hours. So over a 24 hour period of time, the water that's accumulated in this system will slowly be discharged.
Okay. And then my, my question really was for the planning board. So the, this municipality or this, this field does, isn't regulated by the same regulations that a homeowner has where you have to maintain your own stormwater? They're able to release it into the, the public sewer system?
I think this is more of a question for the building department to answer and clarify for us. Right? I don't think Concordia would have that answer.
I could just jump in.
It was answered today by our consultant. I believe you received a copy, no, Antonio?
An email was sent to us, yes.
Okay, well, that question was answered by our consultant.
I know, but it needs to be clarified to the public.
We, the response, I'm going to read it. The, the response we received from our consultant, Anthony Oliveri, says residents are permitted to drain to the municipal stormwater system. Both this project and residence would be required, however, to provide stormwater detention to reduce the runoff rates from pre-existing conditions to post-construction. You know, in other words, they actually are reducing the rates of runoff into the system with the proposed infrastructure and stormwater design. Residents would be required to do the same.
Just to, just to clarify, a, a, an institution or a residence with any new work is responsible for capturing any rain runoff that lands on any hard surface, any impervious surface on the site. And a synthetic turf field is counted as an impervious surface. So same as if, 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 if this was a humongous house, we would have to capture all the water. We're doing it for the field as well. So it is, it is the same regulation. And as Chuck said, we have additional regulations that we also have to abide by.
Okay. Has there any, been any coordination with the town of Eastchester? Because obviously this falls in two different municipalities, right? So this is obviously the Village of Tocco. But then where you are redirecting the water is the Village of Eastchester. So, or the town of Eastchester. So the, you know, the sewer system, the pipes underneath Crawford are definitely outdated and undersized. You know, we've, it's been, it's been definitely noted that the pipes are, are, are definitely undersized at this point. And my concern is that we're taking more water and putting it into a system that is already, you know, overtaxed and undersized. And there's really been no coordination with the town of Eastchester on making sure that where you're directing the water, they're able to manage the water that's being directed into that system.
So, so Bill, just so you're aware, this, this application was sent to Eastchester when we received it. Eastchester submitted it to their consultants. Eastchester submitted it to their consultants. We received a report back from their consultants. Who made some some comments, those comments are incorporated into the plan. Both both our consultants, Tocco's consultants and Eastchester consultants indicated that this is a very good plan. And will reduce the the potential flooding, you know, by this particular site. This actually will help the condition you currently have in your community. I I mean, I I I I know you have reservations, but if we do nothing, it's status quo, everything's gonna it's it's going to be everything coming off the field is going to go onto Rose Avenue and come straight down to you. What they're doing at this point is they're creating this into bathtub, collecting all the water and then slowly releasing it into the into the sewer system, the drainage system. So it's going to be much more. It's going to be better for that community. That rather than throwing all the water down at once, it's slowly coming down. So it gives everybody an opportunity to get gives gives the the collective runoff an opportunity to to go through the sewer systems without, you know, bringing this additional site into the sewer system at the same time. But it's going to be beneficial to the condition. Yes, your pipes in Eastchester side are undersized. I mean, Eastchester really needs to do something about that to really help you guys. Unfortunately, that's not something we can do.
Well, that that's my concern. You you just said it, right? Like, the pipes are undersized, and now we're putting more water into the pipes.
We're not putting more water into a pipe. We're actually reducing the inflow into the into the pipes. In other words, we're collecting all the water onto our site. There's a little, if you look at the drawing, is a little meter box. Everything is going to go through that little meter box and then slowly be released into the drainage system. So you're not getting for argument's sake, you're not getting everything coming to you at once. It's it's slowly coming down there. Versus what's happening today, which is all all coming off the site going down rows. And, you know, for whatever the rain event is, you're going to get constant water coming down versus, you know, collecting the water, keeping it on site and slowly releasing it.
I I I understand what the the concept is. I'm 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 just a little skeptical. That field isn't pitched. I understand that we're getting, you know, we're going to get runoff from the southeast portion of the field. But to me, any water, the way the field is now, any water on that north side or the northwest side isn't running off that field and running down rows. It's just being, you know, absorbed into the ground. With this drainage system, now every piece of water that falls on that field is being directed into that main pipe running through the field to that meter and then directly into rows. I understand the concept. I understand that you're saying it's going to work, but I'm I being here seventeen years and just seeing different situations around here and how they've tried to solve it. I'm a little skeptical, and I'm wondering who we go talk to when this is done, and it's only exacerbated the problem. We can sit here and you guys can say it's we're going to release it. It's going to be a slow release over twenty four hours. But I'm just telling you myself and a lot of people around here are very skeptical of this of this of what this is here. And I'm just wondering who we go talk to in two years when the problem has only gotten worse. You guys don't have to fear. It's not your houses that are being flooded.
So just so you're aware, this particular field right now, it's been, you know, it's been used for fifty, seventy years, right? Right now, it's that that field is like concrete. There's no water infiltration whatsoever. So anytime it rains, you got immediate pounding on that particular site. So any any if you have any sort of substantial rain event, everything off that site coming down rows and 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 going down it's a sewer system. Every we we've had, we've had two consultants look at this. They both say it's going to be beneficial to to your community. The fundamental issue is you really have to pressure Eastchester to increase the size of that pipe. I mean, that's the only true solution to help your community.
Well, again, does that fall on us? Or shouldn't you be working in coordination with Eastchester? I mean, we're only communicating.
We have, we have worked, we have worked with Eastchester. We provided them this documentation. We we have the Iona and Eastchester meet as well. They met and went over the design. You know. I think this will be beneficial to the community.
I hope it will be.
I know you disagree. That's fine. But, you know, it's 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 going to be better than you have than what's today.
Okay, well, I I truly hope it is. And I think I really don't think the owner should fall on the community members to pressure Eastchester. I feel like if this is, this should really truly be a coordination between the village of Tocco and the town of Eastchester, since this is falling in two different municipalities.
Unfortunately, Eastchester owns that particular pipe.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wish to speak? Caroline, is there anyone else?
Yes, we had Andrew Sanho. As the next participant. Andrew, are you available?
Yeah, I see.
Yes.
Hi, identify yourself, please.
Andrew San Giorgio, thirty nine Rose Avenue. So so actually, Bill, I see asked my question about at the last meeting. I think it was indicated that someone was going to check with Eastchester to see if the system could handle it. So my question was actually answered, but I figured I'd repeat it. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I I I mean, we we try to engage all interested parties in this. We wanted to make sure this was not going to adversely affect the Crawford, the Rose community down there. We want to make sure that this project is going to be beneficial. It's going to help the overall issue. So and like I said, we we've submitted it to Eastchester. We've gotten our consultant's report back. The Iona team has made the minor modifications to the to the documents and has incorporated everything, the most everything that they asked for.
Yeah, okay, because, you know, I was I was wondering if like subsurface detention systems were explored for this, that would kind of hold the water a little bit.
This is what this is, actually. So so what what if you could put the 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 plan back on screen? Chris? So if you look at the angle dotted lines there, that rectangle, the large rectangle. Yeah, so in essence, the entire entire section will be excavated, I think, for about three to four feet. Is that correct, Chuck? So and that's going to necessarily create a bathtub. It will be filled with perforated piping and gravel. So everything that's all the rain event, all the rain that's going to be collected will be in that, let's call it rectangular bathtub. And then slowly, if you look at that, that horizontal pipe, and there's a little square, Chris, if you could just put your mouse over the the center of the field horizontal pipe, right? So and that then there's a little box on the right hand side there. And that's going to basically meter the water coming out of the bathtub going down into the the drainage into the sewer system.
Okay, I think it was noted that, you know, there's not much infiltration now, but have there been any borings or any data that shows that there's going to be increased infiltration once this system is installed?
Right, so they've been playing on this field for over fifty years. So the the ground has been compacted to the point where literally any sort of rain event that becomes flooded. So now that we're going to be they're going to be excavating this particular site, they they the the entire site will be filled with loose gravel compacted. And again, and the field is perforated so that all the water will go through the actual field cover into the called the bathtub, collect there and then slowly meter it out, you know, and off the off the site onto the sewer system.
Also worth noting, just to add in, that the compaction of the soil typically is within the top twelve inches when there is compacted soil from active use. It's within the top twelve inches of the soil. Because we're going to be removing that, it's likely, although our calculations still assumed no infiltration. It's likely that the subsoil will have considerable infiltration that we it's keep in mind that that gravel is sitting on that subsoil. So all the time that the water is sitting there, it will be infiltrating as well. So you'll get infiltration under the field. And it'll be a metered flow. So it's it's a best of both worlds with the system. Chuck, you can add in if I said anything incorrectly there.
For a landscape architect, you got it just right.
Yeah, I just, you know, I had a big event where the sewer, you know, we got sewer water in the house. And obviously, we're concerned because this from the plan, it looks like there's a lot of water coming just to Rose Avenue. So but thanks for your responses.
Thanks for participating. Anyone else?
Just one quick question. If you could just, I I'm sure you've mentioned this, and I'm sure it's in the documents, but what's the start date and end date for the work?
I I think Iona wants to start as soon as they get approval, because spring is upon us. But I'd never have to get the building department's approval and then there's some conditions as part of the starting of the project that will make the DPW Police Department to make sure that we want to minimize the impact from a construction perspective. You know, all deliveries will be done after rush hours, will try to be coordinated. So we want to make sure that this is a will not disrupt the the traffic for Rose Avenue as much. We try to try to mitigate that as much as possible. So we want to make sure that the all parties are speaking to one another before we start this project. So as part of the conditions of approval, these are the things that are going to happen.
Do you think it could be done by the summer or the fall or?
We're we're looking to have this done as soon as possible, and it will certainly land within this construction season. It should be a three month window or so, depending on a lot of the things that Antonio just mentioned. When that ends up starting will dictate when that ends. So, you know, there there's too many hurdles at the moment to to predict exactly when that would start. But again, we're 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 are doing our absolute best to try and get things moving.
Thank you.
I just had a follow up question from the when you're you're mentioning that, you know, it can handle the nine inch rainfall and no system is perfect, things fail. But what happens if it fails? What happens if the bathtub is full? Let's say at nine inches? What happens then? You know, it the water comes out, where does it drain? Can you speak to that, knowing that nothing is perfect, even the current situation? But what happens when the system fails and how much rain would that take? And how what is the, you know, the the flow? Is it, you know, three inches over one hour? It just starts spilling out? And where does it go? Have you looked at that?
There's no way to predict how much it could be. Depends on what kind of failure you're talking about. Depends on, you know, all kinds of factors. However, the the system has, in addition to the capacity that we've already described. The first thing that will happen is, we don't typically want the rainfall to fill up so high in the bathtub that it gets into the structure of the field. That's into the into the actual synthetic material that creates the field. So we keep the water from getting that hot. So if the system were to fail, the first thing that happened is it would actually hold more water. And that's assuming that there was some kind of a blockage in a pipe. The second thing that would likely happen is the rate at which the water comes out of our pipe would increase. So the velocity at which it comes out would go up. Which means you would have faster water coming out of the pipe, but still in the contained system. And then the catastrophic situation could be that everything fills up and it overflows. And in this case, because we got a slight crown in the field, half of it will go towards rows, half of it will go towards the swale on the other side, and it would run off the site.
And at what point is that like ten inches? You know, anything above the nine inches or because you said you don't want the pipes to fill up too much too quickly? What what it what it number is that can you estimate? So knowing that nothing is perfect, but just.
I can tell you that the current system, if it works the way we planned it, will handle more than the nine inches already. It'll probably handle as close to twelve inch.
Okay, so twelve inches, then it starts shedding and okay.
How far do you go? Does it does it become a fifteen inch rainstorm? I can't.
Oh, no, exactly. It's just more of what what is the tipping point? What is that tipping point and what happens? Just to.
But it's not necessarily a tipping point at all.
So but the other question, the other question is, if you have a, let's call it a two hundred fifty year rain event, right? You think about all the water coming from all the different sources, right? I mean, the street. I I mean, it it I don't think the field will be the the catalyst that's sort of the go right. You have a a massive rain event. I mean, we've got to get water from all over.
Yes, I understand, just more of just understanding, you know, is it ten inches, it's full? And then it just sheds to the side like anything, you know, the the current conditions are not perfect either, but just wanting to get a better understanding of that.
I think the better answer is this. Regardless of the rainfall event, whether it's two inches or ten inches or fifteen inches. This design will result in a slower rate of discharge off the site. So in all cases, it's better than what you currently have.
Okay.
Just as a point of reference, a a new field, a brand new natural turf field, let's say, installed. So you have a sandy loam soil. It's a Met Stadium or, you know, Yankee Stadium with excellent soil. Even those fields, they saturate and they start shedding water after a two inch storm. So if you have a two inch storm, any water beyond that will start, you have to drain it then. That's why a lot of those professional natural grass turf fields have drainage underneath them to try and move that water out so that they can play sooner after larger rain event fall, rain events. So, you know, the that that's an excellent new field, field that we have here. Just to go back to what you were saying, Ed, just imagine a ten inch rainstorm on the current field. I'm sure you don't have to imagine it. It's it's probably happened.
It did, yes.
Yeah, exactly. So.
And it worked. So so far for us, it worked. So that's why I'm just asking the questions. That's all. I appreciate it. And I just going back to that Eastchester, just reading the memo, I know that the consultant had suggested a couple of mitigants. You know, such as retention fields at the near the softball field. Has that been, you know, negated in that meeting happened between Eastchester, Iona and Tocco already?
That Ed, that meeting has has not happened between all those parties. There was a meeting with myself, David Burke, and the Eastchester folks to talk about that. But, you know, and we explained to to Eastchester really what we're what's in our purview is what's in our locality, which is just really that field of all of Iona. And I I know they want to have a follow up meeting with Iona about the other issues down the street from where we're at.
Okay, so not so that's still to be discussed, those mitigants that the consultant had mentioned?
We addressed those, Ed. This is Kevin Kern from Iona, the COO, and we did address those. Part of this materials that we submitted, talked about them at the beginning of the meeting, over and above what we had designed, which was already an overdesigned plan. We heard out Eastchester and responded and addressed some more mitigating factors on top of the overdesigned plan. And we're happy to meet with them as well and continue to have a dialogue about other issues.
So so they withdrew the mitigants they recommended, or it's just agreed to disagree or?
We addressed what they raised.
Yeah, okay.
And what what they raised on our field was addressed by by Iona. What they addressed down the street hasn't been addressed yet, but that's not in our purview right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Anyone else have any other questions? There's a question here from Colleen. Do the consultants have some good examples to provide about a similar project that was able to improve the situation besides telling us it will be improved? Well, essentially, that's that's what consultants do as part of their business is always review current and existing projects to understand future projects. So it's it's a part of the entire model that's been reviewed by multiple engineers now with their experience and how various projects have worked, but.
So, yeah, Kevin, I I understand that. I guess the question is, you know, how like, for example, Chuck, have you installed this type of system before? Have you had any issues? Has it worked as per your design? Exceeded your design? Can you give us a little bit of?
I'll tell you that my office in the future with another landscape architect has designed probably I'm going to say somewhere between ten and twenty athletic facilities throughout New York City and the five boroughs. We work for the School Construction Authority, does these fields at public schools in the city. And this this system, this exact system is used routinely on those fields and is found to be successful. And 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 as as Kevin has stated, we do, we do look at our projects when they get done. We do assess and evaluate how. We do assess and evaluate how they perform. And I will tell you that our models are, for the most part, very conservative. And and what I what I mean by that is, we would predict a certain rate of discharge from a project like this. And my guess is that when we go to measure it, it will actually even be less. So yes, this is a tried and true method, especially with synthetic fields. This is one that's accepted by state agencies, city agencies like New York City School Construction Authority. And I think at the end of the day, this this will prove out to be as conservative, not more than what we have predicted it to be.
Thank you.
Basically, the bottom line is it will be an improvement of what you have. And I'm speaking as a licensed engineer.
I do, right?
Just to point out that they uh I see Steve in the chat asked for a name of a field that are using the system. I could um uh point out to one system, Hackley Fields, we did two fields, uh two actually larger fields than this. Um that are both using the system on their on their campus, just up in Terrytown. And we did a a after construction review and and it's they're working as designed.
Uh Mr. Carney, you have additional questions?
Yeah, just quickly, um has the current runoff been measured and how does it compare? I know you were saying that um the new system is going to improve the runoff. Has the current runoff been measured and how does it compare to the runoff estimate for the uh the new system?
Yes, we we calculate the rate of runoff from the site in its current condition. And then we calculate the anticipated rate of runoff after it's redeveloped. And we compare the two. And our analysis indicates that the runoff after the development has occurred is significantly less than what currently happens on the field.
And and can you share those estimates?
They're in the engineering report, yes.
Yeah, I don't have a copy of the engineering report, so.
Well, that's like the the hundred year storm has about a fifty percent reduction in the rate of discharge. And the two and ten year storms have something less than that, I think they were around fifteen and twenty percent. I don't have the exact numbers, but there's a significant reduction in the rate of runoff in the post development as demonstrated in the engineering report.
Anyone else have any other questions? So once?
I make a motion, we close the public uh hearing.
Let me go to three first, right, please? Three, okay. All right, so at this point, I make a motion to close a public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? I.
Alright.
First of all, I I want to thank all the residents for coming out and really appreciate all the uh the good questions and uh. Uh we really appreciate you guys participating in the whole process, so thank you. Um, okay, so at this uh, does anyone from the board have any other questions for this applicant?
None here.
So once? Twice? Alright, uh alright, so does anyone have a resolution? Paul, that would be you. Your time to shine.
Village of Tuckahoe Planning Board Resolution Decision. Applicant owner Iona College, location of project two hundred White Plains Road, Tuckahoe, section thirty one, block four, lot fifty. Description of project, Iona College seeks to make improvements to an existing soccer field located at two hundred White Plains Road. In two thousand eighteen, this board approved Concordia College, the prior owner of the field, for a near identical project. However, the improvements were not implemented and the approval expired. Iona College is now before us with a scaled down version of Concordia's approved application. Iona College's application does not include the following, which all had been approved in the Concordia application. A new utility shed, a new press box, new bleachers, a new sound system, a new scoreboard, a new field house considering consisting of locker rooms and a concession stand. Iona's current application is generally limited to the new field with improvements to the surrounding grounds. Secret Resolution pursuant to the regulation regulations of secret, this board finds that, one, the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of secret and its implementing regulations. Two, this board is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed site plan application. Three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
Can I have a second, please? Right, unmute yourself? Right, unmute yourself?
Uh second. Or can I say?
Uh. I'll second. Uh Nancy, please take a roll.
Commissioner Narenberg?
Or?
Commissioner Wolfson?
For.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Against.
Commissioner Michael?
Uh she had to leave.
And then Chairman Leo?
In favor.
The following is the Resolution Decision of the Planning Board of the Village of Tuckahoe, New York. In rendering this decision, this board has had multiple work sessions, multiple public hearings and input from the village's engineer, Anthony Oliveri from Dolph Rotfield Engineering PC. The application was also submitted to the town of East Chester, who had their consultants, Killard Sessions, review the application as well. The consultants provided comments that were incorporated in the applicant's revised project drawings. As stated previously, this is a scaled down application from a project that had already been approved by the by this board in two thousand eighteen. This board must look to section seven dash one of the Village of Tuckahoe zoning code for the standards to approve site plans. The following are the standards and our analysis of same. One, safe, adequate and convenient vehica vehicular and pedestrian traffic circulation, both within and without the site. At least the following aspects of the site plan shall be evaluated to determine conformity to the standard. The applicant has submitted a circulation plan. Said plan is virtually identical to the approved prior application. We find that this traffic plan will allow for safe vehicular traffic on and around the site. The attendants and additional signage called for during events held on the site will be able to adequately direct traffic to and from the parking areas on Iona's property during said events. We find the crosswalk to be added to Rose Avenue would allow safe pedestrian passage from the site to Iona's additional parking areas. If there's any additional signage required by the Tuckahoe Chief of Police, the cost of same shall be borne for by the applicant. A construction traffic plan has been provided to ensure minimal traffic impact to the community. Additionally, prior to the beginning, the project and meeting will be held with the project general contractor, Tuckahoe Building Department, Tuckahoe Police Department and Tuckahoe Department of Public Works to go over the project and construction procedures. Two, the protection of environmental quality and the preservation and enhancement of property values in the neighboring areas. With the additional fencing and landscaping, we believe the project will enhance the neighboring area. The additional improvements will adequately shield the neighboring properties, allowing more privacy to neighbors than they already enjoy. As to the drainage and erosion, the applicant has proposed a drainage erosion plan that has been reviewed by the village's engineer, Anthony Oliveri from Dolph Rotfield Engineering PC and East Chester's consultant, Killard Sessions. The consultants have found the plan to be adequate and has concluded the drainage from the new field will be an improvement over the current field. Three, a quality of building and overall site design which will enhance and protect the character and property values of the adjacent neighborhood. The applicant is replacing a field that is in major need of repair and updating. The applicant's proposed improvements will enhance the surrounding neighborhood. Based on the above, the applicant's proposed site plan is approved with the following condition. One, the applicant shall strictly adhere to the construction and event traffic plans submitted. If it is determined by the building inspector or code enforcement agent that the plan is not being complied with, then the applicant must appear back before the this board to determine and this approval shall be revoked. Two, there shall be no exterior lighting on the site other than security lighting to be approved by the building department and planning board chair. Three, the circulation plan refers to event days. Event day shall be defined as any Iona home games and any game played by any other entity utilizing the field. Four, buses may only drop off and pick up on Rose Avenue. However, no bus shall be allowed to remain on Rose Avenue in excess of fifteen minutes. At the time of drop off and pick off pickup, there shall be an attendant located on Rose Avenue to ensure orderly pedestrian and vehicular traffic. Every representation of the applicant made in its application and presentation will be a condition of this approval. Any deviation from the representations made shall be cause for the revocation of said approval. Meeting day March twenty, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Meeting day March two thousand twenty two.
Alright, I make a motion, I make I second this. Nancy, please take a roll?
Yes, Commissioner Narenberg.
Ray, you're muted. You're muted. Ray, you're muted.
Yeah, four, excuse me.
Yes, for mission Commissioner Wolfson?
For.
Carpenter?
Against.
Commissioner, uh Chairman Leo?
In favor. Uh like to thank you guys for all the effort and the cooperation uh for this entire process. Uh Chris, Chuck, thank you very much for all your efforts. And hopefully this will be a successful project. And again, please be mindful during construction so that uh we minimize the impact to the community.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board.
Alright, Chairman, members of the board on behalf, I want to thank you very much. Look forward to working on on site.
Yes.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye bye.
Thank you.
Uh one, uh Nine Jackson Avenue.
Hi, guys. Dennis Lucenti from Nine Jackson Avenue, Lucenti Realty LLC. I'm here with Andrew Callahan and Matthew, he's our architect, and Matthew Brennan, which from iDef Media. Um, so I just want to give you a brief overlay and then I'm going to get you over to Matt to talk about his business. Uh this property consists of a stucco building on the left side, which um ProTech or USIC operates out of, just like.
You wanna, uh Dennis, do you want to share um a plan so people at home can see exactly what you're talking about?
Uh sure, actually, um Andrew, do you have a plan or?
Yeah, he's putting it up.
Oh, perfect. Alright, so the um the building to the left where it says where you see those parking spaces there with two, three, four. Now, that's what I refer to as the stucco building. It's a two floor stucco building. And the tenant is ProTech. Uh the actual name is USIC, if I'm not mistaken, also known as ProTech. So um they've been renting for, I think, six years now. And um nothing's changing with their site. Their car has actually got a lot smaller. Um if you ever go by, you can see they're using really small cars, as you can see. Uh we have them parked at um, they could fit three in the in the garage. Um they have the parking space one on the side of the building. And then they have parking space six, uh seven, eight and nine. Um, they don't, we have, we show five uh cars out there, but they don't always have five at at night, so um but we showed it there because um it just, everything fits good. Um for Greenkeeper Street Care is also on the on the property. Um, they're they're parking the four larger trucks, twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen. Um they're parking three medium trucks um next to the other metal building that we're going to be talking about. That's on this right side that we call the workshop. Um but so Greenkeeper Street Care has been parking there also for many years. Um, they also occupy the office and the small handy, the the handicap bathroom that's in the building, uh the metal building, which we'll be discussing. Um, so I used to use the workshop garage area, which is the metal building on the right. I used to use that for my uh light mechanic shop that we were approved for from um our last meeting, whatever year that was. Um, so I've reached a point where I didn't need that light mechanic shop for our trucks. And um basically, Matt um from iDef moved in there and um he first was using it as just storage. And he'll tell you all about how he grew over the last couple of years, but um he's using it as as his workshop. So just a couple of quick points, I want to just, when I was using it as a mechanic shop, we had one main mechanic on site. We had a mechanic assistant, they both parked on site. Normal operation day, we probably have two to four vehicles coming in and out just to service them. They were our vehicles from other locations. We do just light uh safety checks on them. Um we'd have uh um parts being delivered, um you know, basic light stuff there. Uh us moving out and Matt operating in there, the site, in my opinion, is actually um it's a less impact, basically having a, you know, Matt's use there. Uh so and um he's going to talk all about that, but um that's pretty much, you know, the site outside, we cleaned up the parking uh to what it's being actually used now versus the last plan, so everything just fits nicer there and parking spaces are assigned. So I'm gonna, uh if you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer and then I'm going to introduce you to Matt.
Sure, before before Matt speaks, uh so basically what we're talking about is Matt is taking over uh these, the uh workshop uh and the handicap bathroom and the utility room, that's his space, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and during the uh the workshop, we talked about parking. I know he had the number sixteen, but we talked about uh providing two additional parking spaces as well.
We gave it, we gave him ten and um ten and eleven, and I actually, it was um a good timing because they worked it out with um ProTech and you and uh uh put it in their lease and everything that they have, one, six, seven, nine and eight, and ten and eleven is not for them.
Okay. Yeah, are there going to be any challenges if if I park in, you know, number nine and then all of a sudden you got ten and eleven?
No, I mean, and and and.
This is not only tandem, this is triple tandem.
Yeah, but the way the the, so again, this is really just for um like the way ProTech uses it at night, it's really just for night uh parking, which uh Matt's not up working at night, so. Um and again, even though he is one employee, I know the three spots are for future growth, um uh which we spoke about. Um but even at that time, um when parking spaces are there, um ProTech, their cars are out in the field, uh you know, do the day. This is more of like a night parking scheme of how it's set um at nighttime.
Okay.
Like after hours.
Alright. Okay, so Matthew, tell us a little about your business and what you do.
So Matthew. Hey, everybody. Uh my name is Matt Brennan, uh the owner of iDef Media. Um, to go quickly, give you a recap on on what I do, um just to give you some background, I uh have education in mechanical engineering and architectural design. Um I started off many, many years ago right out of college um as a freelancer and graphic designer and and I was doing video work and and stuff like that. Um I made my way into, oh, there's my stuff. Uh I made my way into product design um very a few years ago. And um I was designing products and I was having them manufactured in a factory that I worked with in China, like most other people were doing many years ago. Um, I had that had a lot of problems with it and um I did some case studies and and basically, you know, with my background and ability to to do uh design work and 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 work with software that that's relevant to what I do. Um, I decided, hey, you know, this is something I I think we can do here. And uh so I kind of bootstrap my way through um from project to project and uh decided, hey, we're going to you know, start making the stuff that we do here. Um and what you're seeing right now are are examples of some of the work that I do. Um, most of the stuff that I do, so the vast majority of it is servicing hospitality industry, so um you know, with the lockdown and everything, that was a tough time uh for me. However, we weathered that storm and uh and now things are doing well. Um what I do primarily is I make um it it's a very, it's hard to say exactly what I do. Um but it's it's primarily in display signage, marketing materials. Um I do a lot of work with hotels, restaurants, nightlife venues, whether it's in New York or LA, actually across the whole country, this stuff gets shipped out. Um, and yeah, that's what I do. I do a lot of prototype work, so like very one off things. Um but in terms of uh like what I actually do at the shop, you know, the the it could be a one off prototype that that gets done, that's the end of it, never sees the light of day. It could also be something like you're seeing here with the Shandong Garden Spritz signs that get sent out to hotels and and restaurants all over the place, and we have a low volume run, so I do uh, you know, it could be made in Tuckahoe, New York. Yeah, it could be like uh, it could be like thirty units, something like that, and then uh it's on to the next one. And you know, just constantly staying on my toes. I love what I do. I love the town of Tuckahoe. Uh everyone I've met here has been super uh friendly, warm and uh welcoming and and I hope to continue to work here and and grow the business and uh bring manufacturing back to the United States. That's kind of my main goal here.
Matt, talk about some of the equipment that you use and kind of the setup of the shop.
Yeah, so, yeah, um do you have the? Do you have the floor plan that shows like the CNC in it on there?
Yeah, right there, you're right.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, you know, it's it's not a huge space. Uh. Yeah, I mean, it's not, you know, it's, it's not a huge space, uh, but the, the workhorse of, of what I do is with CNC router. Um, if you're not familiar with that, basically, if you've ever used a, a hand router, um, it's basically a spinning, a spinning tool with different types of bits that can cut different materials. Um, the CNC part of this is where software comes into play and I can, in, in my software, design parts, uh, to be cut out of sheet material. Um, my, my machine or router is capable of cutting, um, anything from, you know, woods, hardwoods, plywood, uh, plastic sheet or, uh, non-ferrous metals. And by that, I mean entirely aluminum because I really don't work with anything else. That is literally the thing that I, I got a few years ago and had it in my garage at home and, and, and started this off. Uh, originally, like I said, I was doing this in China and that's where I found the, the space, uh, with Dennis is I was, I was using, keeping all of these, these pieces I was having done here before I drop shipped them or send them out. So yeah, that, that machine basically cuts, you know, different types of materials. And then from there, the, the vast majority of everything else that I have in there is, you know, power tools, miter saws, um, orbital sanders, things like that. Uh, yeah, we just, we just, we just get it done there. Um, I know the, the, the concern that we had last time that we spoke was obviously about air quality and ventilation and surface coating processes. Um, should, should I get into that?
Yeah, just tell us, you know, what you, what you're doing, what, what, you know.
So, okay, so, um, the ninety percent of what I do in terms of any kind of surface coating, uh, process is powder coating. Uh, and that process, if you're not familiar with it, it's an electrostatic process where, um, if you're working with metals, um, you, you would have a, um, um, a gun that would, would discharge powder onto a metal part. That part is, uh, charged negatively. The gun is charged positively and by static, uh, the powder itself sticks to the part. Um, the enclosed paint oven that you're seeing there is the enclosed paint oven that I have. It is, uh, four feet deep by eight feet wide by eight feet tall. Uh, it has three, um, spray booth cartridge filters that are, um, they're HEPA filters and have a ninety, I think ninety-eight point five percent efficiency at point three, the point one microns. Um, and then, uh, there's two twenty-seven hundred CFM fans inside. Uh, those are non-combustible electric fans. Uh, and then it gets, uh, a final stage filter, two MRF eleven filters, uh, out that, outside of that, after that. Um, so it captures everything. The point of this is to keep the powder itself, uh, localized so that you can clean it up easily afterwards using a shop vac or a broom, whatever. Um, but that's the purpose of that spray booth.
But that's not venting out anywhere, right?
It vents into the shop. Yeah, it's so, it's completely clean. The, the, the beauty of powder coating, um, is that it's like one of the most environmentally friendly coating, uh, processes available. Um, I don't know if you had a chance to see this because I, I had, I had sent out a, uh, a, a quick brief on this. Um, but there's a, there's a, on the EPA's website, there's, there's a whole thing from, I think, Clean Lines, uh, which is a partner with the EPA that goes over this, um, in a little bit more detail. But in any case, the, the thing with powder coating is that the, the main concern, obviously, with like environmental factors is you're talking about VOCs, you know, volatile organic compounds. And there's virtually zero VOCs with powder. Um, so for that reason, it's one of the most environmentally friendly surface coating things. Um, and then, you know, after that, you, you cure it in the oven, uh, which I have next to it, uh, just like cooking a turkey on Thanksgiving. And you have your, your parts and they look nice. They last, they last a long time. Aside from that, you know, talking back, you know, more about what I do, like I said, these are, that's the only really surface coating process that I use on a regular basis. Other than that, you know, you've seen some of the signage that I do. These are wooden pieces that are cut out from the CNC. Sometimes there's light, light box displays, things like that. And, and primarily like we hand roll paint things, um, with, you know, paint you'd buy at True Value or Home Depot, uh, just typical interior, exterior paints. Um, so there's, there are essentially no VOCs or fumes or particulates that are being expelled from the shop itself. Um, I actually, I, I delved into Westchester, uh, Health Department's municipality ordinances on this, looked into it. I actually spoke to, uh, Natasha Court, who is one of the engineers that works with, um, Westchester County Health Department and confirmed that, um, actually powder coating lines are one of the lines that are listed under, um, New York State's Code of Ordinances that are exempt from, uh, I guess applicability for the moisture engine, uh, guidelines on like exhausting, but the, the long story short on that is that as long as you're not exhausting anything outside of the shop, um, there's no need to be involving the health department with any further applications or permits or anything like that. Um, I am.
Just to confirm, you're not exhausting anything out of the shop, right?
No, no, absolutely not. Um, now.
All we would need is something from Natasha Court, who's the head of the department, send us an email stating that and then we can, uh, move forward on our end.
Yeah, no, no problem. Um, as far as like what else I was going to say is just that like, I am working, you know, uh, it's a project-based thing. So, um, there may come a time in the future where there's a project that maybe it makes sense to not outsource the, the surface coating, whether it's using something like HGLP, which I don't see myself using anything past that, but if I did, um, you know, at that time, you know, we could always, uh, go through the proper channels, uh, applications with the county and, and handle it that way with the engineers.
Okay. Uh, does anyone on the board have any questions for this applicant?
Not here.
How much paint or chemicals are actually stored at, at one time in, in the facility?
Yeah, honestly, like no more than you would keep in like your typical garage. I mean, the powders I have probably maybe twenty pounds of powder. Um, but again, these are not, these are not like, uh, solvents that you would store like, like lacquers or, uh, you know, large quantities of paints. Uh, the paints that, for instance, if I was ever doing something like painting a light box sign out of like, you know, a satin black or something, I'd literally get gallons of paint from True Value and, and use those. They usually get used or disposed or have a tiny bit left. I mean, we're talking about very, very small quantities. Um, another thing that was, that was, that I found, like speaking, I spoke to Natasha about this as well, was that like businesses that over a twelve-month period use less than fifty-five gallons of, uh, any kind of, uh, solvent paint or other solvents for that matter, um, aren't even, um, required to comply with the VOC requirements. Um, and that, either way, I don't even come close to using that kind of quantity of, of material. I don't store anything past what I'm using, uh, for a particular project. Um, obviously for the sake of efficiency and cost, um, I want to use as little, you know, material as possible. But again, these are all one-off runs or individual things that I do that, once they're done, they're, it's not like I'm producing the same thing over and over and over again and I need to store any large quantities of anything.
Basically, you're prototyping.
Yeah, that's absolutely right.
Yeah.
You're also doing small runs depending upon.
Yeah, small run.
Yeah.
If, if the prototype works out, which is my goal.
Of course.
Hopefully get big runs one day.
Sure. Anyone else on the board have any questions?
Bill, is there any problems with the venting? Ray, um, myself and the party department will look at the, uh, mechanical drawings once we, once we get them and both of us will approve them. I believe it's, uh, part of our requirements.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, can you guys stop sharing? I just want to see who's in the audience. Great. Um, all right. Anyone else on the board have any other questions? So at this point, I make a motion to open a public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, is anyone here from the public who wants to speak on this application? I see no one else. All right. So at this point, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so at this point, like the reader resolution, Village of Takahoe Planning Board Resolution, applicant owner, Lucenta Realty LLC, location of project, Nine Jackson Avenue, Section sixty-seven, Block three, Lot ten E. Description of project, applicant is seeking to construct a new office slash workshop for a new tenant, iDef Media in existing metal building. Secret resolution, pursuant to the regulations of secret, this board finds that, one, the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of secret and its implemented regulations. Two, this board is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the individual significance of the proposed site plan application. Three, the action taken, uh, taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action. Have a second, please.
Second.
Nancy, please take a roll.
Yes, Commissioner Narenberg.
Or.
Commissioner Wolfson.
Or.
Commissioner Carpenter.
For.
Commissioner, uh, Chairman Leo.
In favor. The following is the resolution decision of the planning board of the Village of Takahoe, New York. Applicant is seeking to construct a new office workshop for a new tenant, uh, in the premises located at Nine Jackson Avenue in Takahoe. We are in possession of all the plans and information as to render a decision on this application. We find based on the work session and presentation at the public hearing that the applicant has met its burden as the, as to seven dash one of the Village of Takahoe zoning code, and therefore the application is, is, application is approved with the following conditions. One, new tenant, iDef Media must provide, be provided with three onsite parking spaces by the landlord. Two, as the tenant utilizes spray paint in its business, the tenant must comply with all New York State Building Code and Westchester County Department of Health regulations regarding air quality. Three, the tenant is, is mainly a one-person operation with occasional help and does not meet with clients at the premises. If the business grows to where the three parking spaces are insufficient, thus causing traffic and parking issues on Jackson Avenue, as determined by the building inspector, the applicant must appear back before this board with amended site plan to address these issues. Every representation of the applicant made in its application and presentation will be a condition of this approval. Any deviation from the, the representations made shall be a cause for revocation of said approval. Have a second, please.
Second.
Uh, Nancy, please take a roll.
Commissioner Narenberg.
Or.
Commissioner Wolfson.
Or.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Or.
And Chairman Leo.
In favor. Uh, so, uh, Matthew, just make sure you get the, uh, information to the building department regarding your, uh, spray booth uh, and the email that he requested as well. Uh, I wish you a lot of luck, uh, in the future. Hopefully with COVID going away, uh, everyone will go back to, uh, having a good time and, uh, hopefully you'll be a busy man and, uh, hopefully you'll be able to grow and, uh, take, uh, the, uh, Dennis's entire property there.
One day, I hope.
So good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you guys. Did it. Have a good evening.
Don't worry, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night, guys.
Hey, Gary. Is Gary here? Did we lose Gary?
I think we lost him. Yes.
Uh, I don't know if you guys saw, before we get off, we, uh, received, uh, uh, for, for the hotel, um, uh, the restaurant, we received the location of the new, uh, site, uh, trash container. Have you guys, you guys recall seeing that?
Yes.
Okay, does anyone have any issues?
Yeah.
Antonio, Gary's back.
Gary's back? Hey, Gary. He's connecting. Gary, you there? Gary.
Looks like he's connecting help from his phone.
His phone.
Not hearing us.
Gary?
He went to Carvel or something.
He didn't invite us. That's terrible.
I don't blame him.
Or us down tonight.
What's going on there, Mike? Gary, can you hear us? All right, so, uh, they, they moved the, the trash directly behind the, uh, the restaurant, which I think is a better solution away from the properties, uh, uh, on the hill. It's called Mino. Could you get back on? Okay, so, so. Okay, so we're talking about the, I'm going to put you on speaker, hopefully you're okay. Wow, look at this. Uh, Gary, Gary there?
I'm here.
Okay, so apparently Gary's computer froze and he's trying to restart his computer, but in the meantime, I have him on my cell phone. Uh, so Gary, we're just looking at the, uh, application we received for the, uh, restaurant, uh, the relocation of the, uh, the trash. So we wanted to just kind of, uh, kind of have a, a quick, uh, discussion about that. I mean, I think it looks fine. Uh, I don't see any issues with it personally. I don't know if anyone else on the board has any comments or concerns about this. Has everyone received it, first of all? I believe it was bailed to everyone. Uh, let me share a screen.
I was just going to suggest.
Uh, February twenty-fourth, uh, email.
Yeah, okay, so I'm going to share my screen. You guys see it? So, so they, they used to be in this location here, uh, so, and they're proposing to move it here, which I think is a, a better location. Uh, it's going to keep away from all the property owners up on the hill there and be very close to their back doors so they can actually, you know, uh, perfectly dispose of, of the, uh, garbage rather than walking across the parking lot.
Seems like a natural location for it.
Yeah, I think so too. I think it'll be a better location, uh, you know, I, oh. Yeah, I just think being across here just causes too many problems, especially at night if you're, you know, taking garbage at night and walking across the, the parking lot there. Yeah, I think it's better for, I think it's better location here. So Bill, I, I don't know what we need to do, uh, but I, I think we're okay with this. We can approve it.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll let him know everything's okay.
Okay, do you need anything from us?
Just an email would be nice.
Okay, all right, cool. All right, so since we're done with our business and I make a motion to close the public hearing, can I have a second, please?
Don't move.
All right. Good evening, everyone.